Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Independent City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. Let the record show that everybody's here. We're all a little worn, but everybody's here and happy. Council members, what I'd like to do is let's do the minutes first and then you take us, like, hey, do the minutes. Are they okay with everybody?
I'm doing it for her.
Second. Motion second. I'll never say goodbye, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have a special guest in the audience tonight. I asked Council's indulgent to change the agenda just a little bit so he can make a presentation. He flew in from Italy to be with us today. I'm gonna ask John Irvine to make a introduction and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. So, Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity here. You've heard me talk before about the virtual situation room project that we were able to partner up with a giant company on. This was an international smart cities challenge that we've won. And with the firewall, which is a very deep software platform, they connected us with a company called Team Dev out of Italy to develop a virtual situation room to help us manage the July 4th event. And since it is getting close, they sent one of their team out here to help us with some training and also to kind of get some final bugs worked out before the event. So I asked Masvidiano to give you just a quick run of, just kind of walking through what the virtual situation room is, kind of what the general idea is that it's supposed to do and how it will work. So, turn around.
Thank you. Welcome to Independence.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, let me to express a thank you for this opportunity because for our company it's very important to be here today and so I wanted to thank you for this opportunity. West Ham Situation Room is the product we are going to use to manage the Independence Day. Situation Room. Situation Room, we can say that it's a system for event management. What is an event? For an event, we intend within limited situation in time and space. We have two main purposes: to keep this space under control and so we can do this by showing all the information on a geographic dashboard. And then the other purpose is to organize the work and so we have task management. Okay. Situation Room is a system, is a cloud system. This means that you don't have to take care of the activity to do work. We can take information from sensors, from IED sensors, from open data, but also from social networks, from Twitter, and from the application you already have to manage issues by citizens in the works. So we have different views: our application for room manager and our mobile applications for operators. But the center of Situation Room is a map. It's a map that shows what is happening in real time. So we have basic functions for the map. On this map, we will have a lot of data: data from sensors, traffic, real-time traffic, data about security, hydrography because the festival is near on Lille, about the health facilities, childhood integration facilities, and crime. We have analyzed the crime during the past year and we have some interesting data and the boundary is okay. Situation Room has a, shows the situation through the map and through a streamer. So, a streamer is, through this streamer, we can take the situation under control because the room manager can see the issues, task notifications, messages, social network tweets from social platforms, and alarms from sensors. I, not worry, I don't know if this is, is live. Just to say that we have a task management and so we are a little more to resolve any problem we could have. So. An important part of Situation Room is the staff. It's the staff management. This allows the room manager to coordinate people for the event. Then we have a simple message system to communicate. And then we have, and finally, we have the integration with your issue, issue managing application in the works. Thanks to this, we can, if a citizen reports an issue, we can manage it in real time and we can solve it immediately. Thank you. If you have any questions, I have you here to explain.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Did you want to wrap up anything, Mr. Irvine?
Yeah. So, I think we're really excited about how this is gonna work. He gave us, like, some training and more in-depth demo of the real Situation Room, which I think is gonna be interesting because you'll be able to track staff location. So for example, and we'll have, for example, sensors on garbage cans to say when the garbage can is full. So if one of those pops up and says it's full, you can look and see, oh, Joe's the nearest one to it. We assign the task Joe. He said, oop, got it. Goes over there, fixes it, says task is done, and on we go. So it's gonna really be able to deploy our resources much more efficiently during the event. That's probably the best thing I can give. Masvidiano arrived late last night. He's at about 4:00 AM this time right now, so I wanted to give him the chance to get in early and then hopefully head back and get some better work done.
Well, thank you very much for coming today. We appreciate it and we're glad that we're here to help test out the system for your company. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna go back to the regular schedule, if that's okay. We now have a certain public comment. The first person who'd like to speak this evening is Victoria Kroll Jack.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. It's been a while since I've done this. I'm gonna speak and then my contractor would like to say a word in another form, so can you hear me okay?
I think so, yes.
I emailed everybody just a few minutes ago, so hopefully you got it. It included pictures, but if anybody wants to visual, I have the pictures here. And I'm addressing is development codes for our community. Does anybody need a more, your question?
Just love is Karen Oss. Yeah, we're gonna get out your glasses.
Thank you. I have a little quick. So, what I wanted to talk about was, I found out recently through making a phone call about setbacking issues on a fence for our property that we actually can't put the fence that we want to put in. So I started doing some research. I'll get right into this because I know I'm on a timeframe. But the reasons for why we want a white vinyl fencing, which I know the code has changed, we're not exactly sure of the year, but it's estimated 2009. I don't know if we found out. Any clarification?
Do you want me to jump in here very quickly? The code was initially, in 2010, the prohibition was strict. So actually, it was allowed for about two years, then in 2012, it was restored as a prohibition.
Okay. Reasons I don't have of why it was removed and added and removed, you know, but virtually vinyl fencing is maintenance-free, even fresh wash it every few years or as needed, and we must have a, for our situation, I have a disabled husband. You can no longer do any of the work outside, nor do I have the ability to do that. And we need a yard and we're completely restructuring our entire yard, relandscaping it to make this possible for us to stay in our home. Wood requires annual maintenance and it's costly, more costly now than vinyl. Actually, if you do some research on that, wood has gone up considerably. For the development code of 74.005-C dot point three, all fences shall be constructed on such materials to be compatible with the surrounding area. Vinyl fencing is the most compatible with our type of house siding structure and type and color. We have a white house with white linings siding. A brick rod iron does not go in our style of home and would not look right. Add new would be a detraction and diminish not only the aesthetic load, but our property value to put that type of other fencing in. It's cost-effective versus load over other materials. There's decorating options, our style sizes are available. Pick the privacy right now, so it's not just one kind that you can get. You can get all kinds of heights, lengths, designs. It's not like it was 20 years ago when it first came out, which may not have been as aesthetically pleasing at that time. Our community has multiple locations with various types of fencing. The pictures that I provided show that. I've been around the community because I wanted to be well prepared when it came before you. There are a gazillion areas of our community with vinyl fencing of all sizes, types, heights, and styles. So we do have in our community, I realize that some of it may have been put in during the 'OK' period, but I believe some of it, information received, has been put in, quoted both for Zack legally, but they got away with it because they were unaware. And I don't think that's an excuse when someone puts something in against a code and not know anything about it. Most communities do allow vinyl fencing, including Beverly Hills, and I'll refer you over to the link in the letter that Ann just produced. The vinyl is made of a polyvinyl chloride. Some are made with recycled materials, making them environmentally complimentary. Most durable, with least amount of regular maintenance, longer lifespan of wood, longer warranties, won't sag due shape and herbaceous to insects, and the rest of the nails finish won't peel from the discoloration, won't rot, work, fade, fire, and is corrosion resistant. After thinking about the years, they'll look the same, unlike wood. If you look at some of these pictures, again, in our community, I only found a couple of wood fences visible from a street perspective that were even decent. The rest were deteriorated, broken, needed paint, needed finishing, all kinds of things. And if that's what our city considers appropriate aesthetic pleasing, I'm shocked because it's not. It looks terrible, it's tacky, it looks rundown. We need this fencing to block animals, unfortunately, we live on a corner. A lot of dog walking goes on. I am sick of dog urine all over everything I have. I can't, I don't know how to enforce that, but if I put up a fence to bar all the things that we're adding into our yard, I hopefully won't have that issue. They're made in six to eight sections, made for easily install by snapping together with main posts and painting for support. And they, we need it for a safety factor because we are in a couple of water features. I want to make sure our property is protected as well as any small children or animals that might want to approach. Granted, some animals can get into the yard anyway, but it would help. On Judy, I have submitted questions by email to some council members, as well as John McCarr, they have a client here, and Johnson, some of you may or may not have received. How comfortable are you coming out? I received a response from Zack, who dated a client, and this is my response to some of the statements and answers given to me in that email. Why is vinyl fencing allowed, was one of my questions. Zack gave his response, this is standard in many cities. Myself and its mothers have contacted various agencies and reviewed development codes and have not found vinyl fencing to be restricted, including Beverly Hills. And again, I'll refer you to Ann's link in the letter, June 12th. If you're willing to make a statement that is a standard in many cities, you need to be prepared to provide proof to back this statement. When Ann approached Zack about which cities he was referring to, or David, I'm sorry, the reply was that Zack is too busy to provide the backup of this statement and that we need to do our own research. Had that been a reversed comment made to you guys, you would have expected us to provide the proof to you, like, which I'm doing tonight, about what I want and why I feel is appropriate. If you do not have documentation, some statements like this should not be made. Why vinyl fences are not allowed? The second half of that question, Zack responded vinyl is a lower quality and aesthetically inferior material compared to wood. That isn't even close to the truth. The vinyl fencing actually adds, if you look around, the vinyl fences that are around our area actually make the places that they were on more attractive, but the wood fences do not, especially because they're not maintained. Unless you maintain it well, it's not going to add the aesthetic appearance that we want in our community. So where does one find a definition of vinyl as being aesthetically inferior material compared to wood? I haven't find it anywhere. Clearly, as pointed out in Ann's link in the letter, other cities do not hold that subjective opinion. I feel this is a very narrow, biased statement considering the information I found online about the durability and variety of type, sizes of vinyl fencing. My response is shown in the pictures that I provided. The vinyl fence pictures, a multiple picture, all look extremely aesthetically pleasing while the wood, as I said, is deplorable. But we're not doing anything to change that. We're just letting it be what it is. Fences shall be maintained, our code said, and all fences shall be maintained so as to be in an upright, self-standing condition and repaired with the same or similar materials used for the existing fence. Don't see that happening. Multiple properties have wood chain link and metal pieces where the wood has fallen down. If they replace flats, they're discolored from the other wood, so it's not attractive. So my question is, what is being done about these properties? If taxmaning individuals at this community aren't allowed to enhance their properties to be more aesthetically pleasing and increase their property values through their resources, despite the existing high source toxic smells and other factors that we deal with right across from us diminishing our property value, then why are so many properties aren't going to be allowed to look like old building yards? And I apologize for that statement, but it's true if you go through our community. What actions does the city take about the wooden chain link fences in our city that no longer abide by the aesthetically required status of the fence code? So that's a question I'm asking. Why does the fence type, another question I did ask in the email, I said, why does this fence type proliferate despite that it is prohibited? The answer was any vinyl fences constructed prior to 2009, we've adjusted the time, illegally permitted under the part fencing regulations, vinyl fences constructed after 2009 or 10, whatever, are likely illegal. In many cases, people erect fences without contacting the city as to the applicable regulations simply because they're unaware that a permitting process exists. That's not an excuse for them to be allowed to have a vinyl fence and me not when I did the right things.
So let me, let me, because I know there are other people that would like to speak today. So what you're asking for is, because I read your email previously, and so what you're asking us to do is to consider whether we want to continue having the prohibition of vinyl fences in Independence, is what I.
I have about 30 seconds left to read. I'd like to read it for public purposes. So what actions does the city take about fences put up illegally? When was the prohibition, of course, we've talked about that? Can the standard be amended or an exception be made? I was told that there was a process, 35-day notice. I don't have 35 days. I'm in the midst of landscaping. I didn't know all of this was an issue until I called about the setback. But if you refer to the link in the letter, there was a planning commission meeting recently where the code was waived, defined the height of building and recommend approvals of council. It seems our city official would pick it and choose it when they agree, and deemed appropriate to change in the building codes depending on who had benefits. That change can remain in the code, and the city allows unaware individuals to get away breaking the codes while the city chooses to turn the other way. Then what is the point of having codes? Should I be able to expect the state to do it while I put up my illegal vinyl fence, even if it enhances our property and community while all around us, I keep properties that disgrace and diminish the aesthetic appearance of our community we love? So, there's a reference to this, the link that, I have to go right here, to the link in the letter, where a developer went to a council and needed to heighten, because his building had eight feet, to be able to stand the code, not to, but he was given permission to. If that can be done that easily, then why can't this be done? Especially when they already have existing vinyl fencing in our area that is attractive and aesthetically pleasing. So, I just feel like we're kind of doing a two-edged sword. We're saying, okay here, okay there, oh, they didn't know, so we're gonna let it go. We have a code, fences being, having to be maintained, but they're not, so we're just not gonna do anything. Where is the line? I don't understand where the line is for each individual.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
Where did Gerald go?
Other people who are, I wanted to recognize that Gerald Nichols wanted to be known that he was of concern about the same thing, but he didn't have it. Are you Gerald?
Yeah, I'm Gerald.
Go ahead. I just wanted to do, wish to.
I won't keep you guys long. I know you guys would listen, and she's done a lot of research. She would like to have her fence put in. It's a PVC vinyl fence. It's recyclable material. I don't see how it's any different than wood. It's definitely better. Been a lot of landscaping over the last 25 years, and usually finds that have nicer homes put in vinyl fence. So it is an upgrade from wood fencing. She has, her husband is sick, she has to take care of him, she can't really maintain the fence, she doesn't want chemicals, you know, out, so I just wish you guys would consider it. She's not asking for, I don't think she's asking for the whole thing to be changed. In her case, I shouldn't be a contributor to her home. I think it would enhance the property, make the community look better, keep the dogs out, she doesn't have water creatures going in, Heather landscaping in. So I wish you would just consider it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Klein, did you want to, did you or any of your staff have any insight related to, I know that there are rules about what you can and you can't.
I think, and I think I've shared a little bit of my thoughts on this with you there. If this is of interest to the council to initiate code changes to development code, I would guess first and foremost that you schedule this for a regular agenda item so that anybody, if there's notice to the public at large, then you're taking this matter up. That said, if you choose at that point in time, could be as soon as your next council meeting, to refer the matter to the planning commission to start to work on, you know, another minutes of the development code along these lines, there, I think our city planner has weighed in, said that there is a 35-day miller's period required to DLCD. That's a part of my law, we can't change that. I don't know, frankly, I'm not familiar with planning rules to know whether they can take this matter up during that 35-day period or if they have to wait for that particular month. So there is a sort of step-by-step process, and then, of course, at the end of the day, it would be, you know, should you, we should come back to you from the planning commission. You know, you would be looking at an ordinance, which again, typically, an ordinance takes another 30 days to go into effect. So, to me, you know, to make this change in a way that somebody can do the work in the next week or two is virtually impossible, but not break the law, to do it. If it's a change that you want to see considered and it might merit in the long term, there is a process, it's just not a quick, it's not a two-step. I mean, it's, there's a process in place, and if that's your brothers, we'll come back to you at the next council meeting with the staff report, explain, you know, describing the issues as we see and responding. Brad will have the information, if Cool Jack has provided, so that will certainly give us a light up on preparing that report. And you'll have the opportunity to refer to the planning commission if you so choose.
Next question. Please do. So what would be the timetable if we were to consider an exception in this specific case?
I think the planning, I think the city planner, which is not, it's not something that should be created except for this stuff. That was, the variance process was described in the planning commission's actions last week, was something that would provide for the code, was anticipate the code, and they followed the rules were placed. There is a rule to vary a requirement of the code, or a prohibition of the code through a variance. So that's a different question. I'm not aware of any way of, I think Zack has weighed in on that, and I think he's right. I can check into the legal, I think he's right. It's different.
I wanted to say that I am very familiar with vinyl fencing because part of my family members put it up and it was very attractive. I don't see any problem with this. Is there a way we can declare a moratorium on any kind of fine that might be levied at this time? And is there a reason we can't refer to planning commission tonight?
Well, I don't know about the first one. If you want to refer to planning commission tonight, you have that data for you. Again, you've not given us any information or considerations with her.
Other thoughts? Questions?
Okay. I guess I'd just like to say, is there something we could perhaps staff to look into a little closer, see if there's some way we could look at this by the next council meeting in some way, talk to legal or something like that?
Yeah. What am I trying to achieve, so I can be to give direction?
Okay, I'll just, I'll just state my opinion, because I was on the planning commission, I think, when we talked about vinyl fences, and most of the vinyl fences that I've seen, I think they're looking pretty tacky looking, they look like plastic fences. However, that was, you know, 10 years ago, and I think that the quality probably hasn't gotten much better, and or, and depending on the type of vinyl fence, and certainly from the distant pictures I saw, this is what I get quality product. I would like to see if there is something the council can do.
I agree with that. What does that mean?
To somehow get an exception so that she would be able to put her vinyl fence in, and then probably after that, look at our code and go through the process.
Unbased enforcement, if is what I'm hearing.
That, you're the legal. Here's the, here's the problem. You're gonna pay the enforcement on this, I suppose, but if you, at the end of the day, you don't approve the change, then now you have a non-conforming use, one that is basically violation of the code, and probably you have to be removed at the end of the day. I don't think you have that, and I think that's where you put her as somebody who wants to put their fence in at risk. Because, you know, you raised, you raised the issue. I've seen vinyl fencing in those days, I've seen vinyl fencing in these days, beautiful vinyl fencing out there. There's a ranch out here, it's just on Highway 99. It's, it's beautiful fencing. But then again, there's the old schlocky look at vinyl fencing, which I think was, you know, how do you regulate the one against the other? There probably is a way, I just don't know what it is. And so staff are gonna have to get out there and help you with that, because I think you don't want the planner, you want an able performer, is what I'm hearing. So I mean, there's a little bit of work that has to go into creating options and understanding the issue, so that they can present it to you, most importantly, present it to the planning commission, who will take up the legislative piece first. I recognize that, you know, you're hearing this tonight, your hearts are with it, you know, it seems reasonable, it sounds reasonable, certainly does to me as well, but at the end of the day, you know, you do sort of have a process in place that honors, one, notice to the public, as, you know, democracy is at large, everybody knows what it is, so everybody can weigh in on an issue. That's why you create a genus of advance notice on substantive matters. And two, there's, there are complicating issues surrounding a vinyl fence. What quality vinyl fence is okay, we'll call it, it isn't. I don't have an answer to that. I know what I see it, but I expect you to, I'm not sure we see it the same way regardless of how we run code.
So, I'm gonna try to kind of.
Excuse me, more, more basic. All that said, I can go to the attorney and see if there's some way that Miss Cool Jack can proceed in a relative, maybe this is a free way, and we'll work back to you.
Thank you.
I would like to see that.
So, so let, if there's an objection, let's follow through with your work with the legal folks, see if there's a, if there's an opportunity. Let's follow that up with, can you folks provide staff report, so that we can take a look and look at the larger, the larger, longer issue because of what you said earlier? Yeah, I remember old time vinyl fencing, that was less, and.
And a lot, there's a lot in town, too.
Yes, there is. Does that sound like an okay approach to everybody on this side of the room, or your side?
Yeah. Okay. I go back to you with two things. One, an opinion from the attorney, whether it's public or private, I don't know, but an opinion from the attorney, how you can proceed in this instance. And secondly, a staff report allowing you, and a gentleman allowing you to make a bigger decision about whether to refer to another planning commission for change, or changes to development code.
And can we have both of this goes in place by or before the next meeting?
Have one in place.
Have an answer from the attorney, and also something on the agenda to discuss this in a larger field of vision.
It'll be in your agenda, the normal course of business, as far as the legal advisor really can't speak for the attorney, she's not capable, she's very busy. Okay, I'll make sure she understands that you need it, at least by the beginning, and if I can get it sooner, I'll share it with the mayor, you can, you know, he and I can talk about how to make it spread.
Okay.
Does that sound okay for both?
It does.
All right. Thank you.
So I just have a question, so I understand. What timeframe, am I looking at getting any information about?
He's gonna, he's gonna call the legal people tomorrow, and we'll see what can happen from there. We're moving as promptly as we.
I just wanted to have an idea, so you can kind of.
Yeah, no, I understand, and.
The next council meeting would be in two weeks.
So you maybe know something more, or it's impossible.
And we'll do what, we'll do the best we can, and I'm looking at staff, we'll do the best we can to keep these folks informed. Yeah.
And we will also appreciate getting all of the research that you've done, because that may help the planning commission make a delineation on what's appropriate and what's not.
Okay. The research I knew was just, I've been online into vinyl fences versus wood fences and found everything there. So you can do the same.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to keep this moving. Um, I have, uh, Jamie Bo. Good evening and welcome. Hi.
Hi, Council. So, um, I came here last year, last year before, before I, my story was, uh, there's another flag being sold to the vendor. They didn't seem, uh, disturbing me, but you have a report. So I could kind of follow up here a few weeks back and, you know, the city attorney manager gives some very gracious answers. Okay. So I wanted to, uh, because you have a few points, I wanted to throw two assumptions about this. Is there actually a vendor this year selling the flags? Otherwise maybe it's.
Uh. What is our, what is our vendor? That the vendors are signed up through the Western Days Commission.
Right.
And we don't have that information with us.
Okay.
And, but we, I can certainly find out.
So I'm going to say common pitch.
Okay.
Okay. So the next one is, uh, assumption. So that, you know, without cutting you down niggly, can I assume that you're in spirit kind of agreeing with what the pitch I think? I mean, okay. The idea is like this, there's something not good here and nice we can respect it. That's just the First Amendment speech issues. But in spirit, if, if you had your brothers, would you rather not have this neighbor park with this family friend there? I'm saying, I'm saying yes. And I think you are. And so anyway, so I'm going to go with yes on that. So, because if you go back to your office and you're only, you know, the sun will rise again. We've got to lose some time. Quite a different battle. So anyway, so like the, uh, the Western Days webpage that advertised this as a, actually friendly, fun for all agents. But in reality, you know, it's a stretch of the hatch on our plant. And I see this and it's, it's not trying to be, but it's disturbing because I know this. So the Western Days, you know, this is a very good Cmax page, but because of this thing, it's less than what's being advertised. So that's my fault. Just saying that I'm pretty used to going. If I just saw something that's on the edge, like, yeah, that's fine. That's, that is, I would just say, I don't want to go. But a lot of people I talk to feel the same. So that's, that's my motivation. So. And, uh, sent an email with, uh, some examples. Vermont has a couple of county fairs. They can restrict a sale. And the city attorney came back and says, Oregon, Vermont has, um, besides the First Amendment federal, but some state law of Portland and they, uh, a resource group want to get advertising. And of course, as you can't restrict that. So that's kind of the opinion of the city attorney. So the vendor could probably prevail. So my question is, let's say the city attorney missed that being in school and didn't know about this case. Why not let the vendor litigate? Why not say, okay, we have a handbook. And there's several pieces of the handbook that say the determination of prohibited items. Send the absolute expression to put that engine. Uh, debt management serves right or he's loose, late, any standards, standard deemed unsuitable activity. So let's just say you went with your handbook. You've got the language that says, yeah, we're saying this will happen. But the vendor listed. Now he has a big calculation. I'll spend it. I'm a businessman. But I want to go through the case. Or, and, you know, I'm probably not wealthy, so I, you know, maybe he still, he would take his place, but I don't know if that's an option, but you post your handbook. The city manager says maybe this handbook needs revision. Well, say he's using that language here. You follow it. Vendor, you call the vendor, sorry, we can't sell the listed items. Let them push the litigation. Otherwise you get, you're given a repass. You're saying, we think in the future, this would prevail in your favor, but you were. I mean, I don't know. That, I'm just thinking, is that possible? Okay. So let's try another, how to handle it. I'm, let's pretend again I'm wealthy. I'm not wealthy. I'm wealthy. Um, and I rent the park out. I have a huge park. And I think there's provisions for that. I get application. This is possible, right? I rent the park. And I can create an event on August 4th to July 4th. To the user of this, all this, the customer acknowledges the thing. And I can restrict whoever I want in terms of my partner with vendors. I don't have to let anybody have it for me. It's my part. I don't, I don't do it. I couldn't resist. Um, it's my part. So now to extend that one bit further, the Western Days Commission is an arm of the city that's operating. It's not a nonprofit. Let's say it was a 501(c)(3). It's a nonprofit.
It's a commission. It's a commission. Yeah.
Oh, let's say, because I helped resurrect the Purities Museum Society. Go ahead. Um, so I know, I know a little bit about 501(c)(3). Let's say the Western Days Commission now became 501(c)(3) nonprofit. They do all the same stuff as they did before, but now they have land adjudicated now before. Because it's their part. And it's like, you know, the change from Linux to Windows is all in the hood. You wouldn't know from the user point of view, right? But the hood is a different animal. I'm wondering, I know that's a lot of work, but I think, you know, there's a benefit there too. Okay. So, oh, and I read this just about an hour before I came over. Page six of the, uh, vendor handbook. And Penn Stays is sponsored by Pennsylville. Therefore vendors are required to sell Pepsi, Pudding, Pepsi, Mountain, Gatorade, Utter Pepper, et cetera. So now, wait a minute. I'm a vendor. Sponsor made me sell Pepsi. I can't sell Coke. But you, the owner, they're saying, uh, you can sell whatever flags you want under November, et cetera. So is that square? The, the sponsor says you can't sell Coke and sell Pepsi. But on my pre-speech, I like Coke. I wagered. I got a flag. Okay. It's a felony consistency there in the manual. And, um, okay?
Final thought?
Final thought? Here's something the Independence, uh, I mean, that's Indiana State Fair did. They didn't outright restrict the sale of the flags. They just asked the vendor not to do it. Have we done that? Why can't we do that? Why can't we just ask the vendor, people are upset about this. It's sensitive. You just not do it. Besides, they have all the legal stuff. So anyway, those are my ideas.
Thank you for taking the time. Let, let me just weigh in here for the first second. And, uh, I, I'm not going to do a dialogue, but let me just say, um, I understand completely. I have no love for, for folks who are, or, uh, you know, showing that kind of flag and, and stuff like that. And I actually did visit with the vendor face to face and said, it's not something that, uh, but, and after visiting with our attorneys and as the city manager has pointed out, there are restrictions on, uh, through the Oregon constitution of what we can and can't do. Now, uh, manager and I were visiting in advance of the meeting and, uh, unless staff, unless the council objects, what I'd like to do is direct staff to, uh, one, take a look at the manual, make sure that it's appropriate and to see if there's any appropriate signage. Uh, somehow to express that if that has to be there, that we don't endorse, condone, love, like, or anything like that. That we, uh, First Amendment is sometimes uncomfortable and, uh, I, uh, yeah. Did, is that?
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
No, I'm just, uh.
Okay.
Either way, I'm just going to say I. I'm a little hesitant in trying to stir up a conversation by being explicit. I mean, I'm, anybody that will talk to us will know that I don't.
Right.
Do that, but creating signage or something that's confrontational versus I'm, I'm, I think you are inviting a bigger problem than may, uh, exist currently. You know, because then you're inviting the debate to happen.
My question is, have you been to see or to talk to the Independence Day's commission?
How about?
Okay. It seems like that would be a wise first choice because this body has empowered them to operate that festival on our behalf. And Counselor Hicks is the, right, or the council liaison for that, um, particular commission. So you might want to talk to him afterward.
Now, do people have opinions that want to share about this?
Just, I appreciate the advocacy. Um, I think we all know that we already that City of Independence is an inclusive city. And so, you know, if you're trying to raise that, that's not okay. He took us like, we said, that's not okay. I think it's okay for us to have an opinion on whether or not we agree that's okay or whether, whether or not we agree that's right. But, you know, false cause and effect. Can't say that they cannot sell them. I think it would be inappropriate to say that.
Counselor, I, I modify what I was saying. I, I, I do think a general statement may be okay, you know, just, uh, you know, in Independence we value, you know, everybody and just a general sign like that is just not pointing at what exactly you're talking about.
That was just post hoc in person.
That would be great.
Okay. All right. Does that provide you a little bit of, uh?
Well, what we could do is help you at least prepare a proclamation or something that could be shared with people at the event. Something that could be posted or something.
That might, that might accomplish the same thing. Yeah. Uh, let's see what, what we can do on and see what happens in the next meeting. Does that sound okay? Is that all right?
Yes.
Appreciate. Yes, sir.
I would, yeah, if you haven't done a lawsuit yet, you might want to consider it. You're very creative in that approach.
I'm not sure if you've been complimented or dissed.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, thank you. I did have a couple of questions for you. I guess it would be better directed to the Western Days.
I think that.
Commission because that's another possible solution to mitigate the whole thing. Could we found just in some, you know, structured details?
Okay.
Without taking it to, you know, street court.
Thank you for taking the time for me. Is there anybody else who wants to? I'm sensitive to the warmth and the rest of the agenda. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else? Does anything they need to say this evening? Okay, we're going to keep this moving forward. Um, I don't have substantive report to make at this point, so I'm going to move directly to, uh, our city manager's report.
In the interim, may I wish you a happy birthday tomorrow?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I'll try to make up for your absence of report by any time. Mayor, members of council, uh, I'm trying not to be too hard. I know it is a warm evening, but I do have a few things to tell you. Some of this related news. So I'll start, I'll just start the talk more vague, wait, have to listen. Again, as you all know, I, I asked my management team to contribute ahead of time things that they think that would be, you know, particularly interesting, like in the term of, in the typically term of our management notes to use. So this is sort of, uh, you know, the highlights of everybody's work, certainly not mine. So just to make sure that's clear. Um, first off, Mount Fur Park, as we all know, and you know, Inspiration Garden is a real jewel that we've, you know, thank you to the artworks of the extension service folks, our, our great, our great crowd. Uh, anyway, we have made Wi-Fi available at the park, so that's now available for use there. We are also installing security cameras. That's frankly in response to some bad behavior that took place out there. So that, that ended well, but definitely us, we're going to go and try and be a little more preventative in, in the future. And all the works have done a good job of completing the first segment of the trail out there. So we're making good progress, trying to support the people that support us. But, you know, again, anyone does not mind Inspiration Garden. Please get out there and take a look. It's truly an amazing volunteer effort. So, uh, on to other matters. So you, as you can probably see, the hotel is now going pretty steady. Uh, we look like we're getting ready to start pouring foundations and we're on track, well on track still to make the mail opening. Things are going relatively problem free, which is good, very good news. Um, yeah, as you heard earlier from one of our, from during the, uh, open comments, the Osprey Point, the Lot A project, uh, did receive its, uh, criteria approved from the planning commission. It was unanimous vote and we have already received their site design application. So that process is underway. So we, we did experience a little bit of a delay. Do, you know, it's in part our own responsibility. So we did have a bit of an extension of time on some deliverables because we were, we're at a point now where we would have pretty much been breached contract not by any good, not by any actions of them. So we've had some time and, but it's still going to be time to work it. Um, you've created, you've probably certainly noticed that the city wholesale closed. Um, they are busy working. We should have hopefully, uh, parallel 45 brewery open for business by August 1st. That's more or less, see how fast the contractors work, but they, they, that's when you start paying rent. It's a big expense, paying rent for your own trading business. So. Anyway, that should be underway. Uh, probably news that may be nearest and nearest to your hearts. Uh, Taylor's has, at least has about an hour ago. So that will be a sweet shop of sorts, not, not the same as the nothing bought in more case. More limited than dinner I model in San Antonio, very much like an existing business in San Antonio. They're expanding their offerings and moving their venue over here. So you'll probably be getting some pretty good smells in that building. The Taylor sign will remain up. There will be, there'll be some interpretive information about the, the history of the building that'll go with it. Um, and they will walk you by the entire building with a number of different hydienes and fogs. But the front will look very much like the conditorial in terms of go in there, let your mouth water and, you know, if you're, if you're not too concerned like I am, but I, you know, my trim physique, uh, you'll have an idea. Um, we are, I keep hearing, we are this close to having been taken out of our financial position on mechanical. It is in, it is in for refinance. The lender's money is there. There's one item that's outstanding. We hope that our, our applicant can get that done, or the owner can get that done. And we should have that, we should be paid off by the end of the week. I think that our pressuring, the pressure that we put on, I think paid off. So I think he's tired of hearing from us and our attorney about performing under the due to. Um, and one more business, uh, operating wine tavern. Yeah, it's also, it's been trying to get it on the fourth. It's a bit challenging. There's, she's working on some hard stuff. There's a pretty hard time to get that done. But it's reasonable to believe that she can at least have something available for the business during the holiday. And then perhaps on her patio, I think. So we're working with her to see if we can open that. So that, that's pretty exciting. A lot of friends she was busy inside them, you know, doing the carpet, putting in walls and whatnot. So that's, that's going to be exciting to do business as well. Um, I, I was a, I pitched it for Sean. I did my best to try and do that. It's hard to set it for the master, but I was in a housing workshop at the leading cities. Uh, from the Oregon city sponsored by the, by the state. They were, they basically were trying to talk about different ways in communities to get in the game on, on housing. Whether it's affordable housing, standard market housing, whatnot. You know, it's a pressing issue in the state these days. And so a number, a number of different issues. I was a presenter, uh, as the events opened, opens the doors for business. So they asked me to take 10, 15 minutes to talk through the issue of independence and where we are, say downtown. And I think I get that done in 10, 15 minutes. Half an hour later, they kind of cut me off and just got in there, got in the queue and had a later. But, uh, you know, there's so many, so many people, so much to say, you know, so much problems with me in 20 years. And, you know, to embarrass the bear, I think that was pretty obvious when you have an Olympian, you know, for 20 years running the show. But, you know, the, you know, the get it done attitude is, the competitive attitude is hard to beat. So. And having a council that's been pretty much the same folks over the course of years, a lot of institutional memory. And, you know, achieving to be on board is, is, it all pays off. So that was a test of my presentation. It took me a little longer to tell that. Um, I'm, I've been providing a little, uh, technical assistance to our latest, our newest higher, we fall city, their city manager. He needs to be on occasion and we've talked through some of, some things to help, to help that community try to succeed. We're, we are already helping them with their, with the court issues, code enforcement issues. We are their quarterback for code enforcement, though I'm not sure we've got a case yet. But we, we signed that deal a while ago. And then finally we have a, uh, I'll find, I got my four things, at least from my, my sheet. Uh, ELGA, which is the, uh, energized local government leaders. It's changing. The acronym's remained the same, but the, the words have changed. It's an organization of budding, uh, public sector professionals, largely geared towards city management as a career, but not necessarily also department heads. It's an organization that has, uh, it was started in, in, in Oregon. Uh, it's now national, maybe international, and they are a great training source for us. Uh, they have a nice partnership again with the leagues. They've done some, some changes there. Uh, they are going to highlights in one of their podcasts as well. So I got called on that. So that'll be coming up fairly soon, but they're, they're really, they're really taken by what has happened in Independence. And they got that, they, they got that information from Skip Newberry, from the Technology Association. And they got that, they got that information from Skip Newberry, from the Technology Association of Oregon, who, if you recall, named us the innovation city, Oregon's first innovation city. So that, that's where the referral came from, but that was, again, could be positive. It is a little more opportunity for us to, you know, pat ourselves on the back publicly for the, you know, for a larger audience. So pleased for that. Here's the thanks from the police department. Busy with calls as well as several community events. They recently participated in cleanup days, officer any days, public library, uh, filled the bus town safety fair at Bymart, Schmecker's Career Fair, Talmadge Health Fair. Uh, and they have major crime team call up this weekend for Polk County. Um, of course, for all this, I'm, I was in the regular police work. Um, on Friday, the 8th, Richard Gonzalez, our newest addition, graduated from police academy. So we're happy to have him back on the, with to help us fill the shifts and get going. Um, uh, also on the 8th, Sergeant Loud Gilbert, who was in, went to Quantico, graduated from the FBI National Academy. So that was a great honor for him, a great honor for, a great job, great opportunity for him and a great honor for us. I think most if not all of our demand level now has been through clinical training.
Chief still here?
I have to step out for a moment. Okay.
Anyway, I think that's the case. So, uh, that's a, you know, it's hard training, it's great training and it's, you know, it's a great, again, a great honor to have one of ours out there. Uh, Oregonians trek across the country for that. Uh, we're, and of course, we're just, we are hosting currently a 40-hour crisis intervention team training at the Vincent Center this week with attendees from around the state, a little firearm office, including the chief. So that's what's going on in the PB again, additional, everything that goes on in the PB. Coming out of COVID works and things that I've highlighted for you. Uh, I talked about the park and the path of Inspiration Park. They've dedicated 150 man hours in the last week and a half of the office, of course, of the soccer fields. Uh, create that, retake, upgrade that, take their action. Uh, a number of water leaks were repaired. Continue to see a trend of higher frequency of leaks than expected. And three number leaks that are on board currently for repair. They, if you, as you walked in, you may have seen the fuel station out back. That is, that's to support our friends in Salem through their crisis. They are, uh, they are still another two weeks on water abatement, water surveillance over there. Um, we also feel the call from Department of Corrections, I did yesterday. They're wanting to use us as an alternative supply, uh, in addition to the city of Kaiser. So we, of course, we agreed to that instead of the big, we're making those arrangements now. So, uh, yeah, we, you know, we're doing what we can to help out the city. And much bigger than we are, but we're doing our best.
Want to call out the staff for just a second here because I know when we got the word that Salem was jammed up, uh, our people jumped on and, uh, offered to be as helpful as possible. And we got a nice communication from their city manager appreciating, um, our neighborliness, you know. Your neighbors got fired, you got a hose, you helped them out. So I always want to thank us.
We'll share that with the staff as well.
Thank you. Continue.
And you're right, I mean, we're there for, we're all there for everybody regardless of any, you know, you know, community, you know, competition, angle on it, when it comes to emergency, when it comes to, you just get in there and do it. Just the way you do it. So sewer, we're sealing the night street, low station, wet well and several leaking manholes. Uh, we've had meetings on irrigation effluent project, that's the purple pipe project that we talked about in the summer, uh, for summer discharges out. Uh, some of you may be more familiar than others. It's a big project that we have to take over this coming year. Uh, work, uh, to put pipeline out to discharge our summer hold, sewer hold. Uh, does anybody want me to spend a little more time on that to understand it or should we move past?
I don't know.
Move on by. No sewer talk. Okay. One more sewer piece and we have the staff report on that, so you can skip it when the time comes. Let's just tell you that we received, uh, heads of your packets. We received the bids from several firms, all of them well above, uh, engineers' estimates. Uh, frankly, it's because we just got out too late in the bidding process. Um, a lot of problems, a lot of issues. Uh, so the solution is really just to go pre-bid it. We canceled, we canceled that bid and we're going to go re-bid it late in the winter and hope to get better response when people have a long career for it. No guarantees, but, you know, at least we'll give that a shot. Um, Public Works is busy getting ready for summer search, busy getting ready for 4th of July on streets. Uh, we're, this guy has been the city engineer for road maintenance projects for 2018, 19, coming fiscal year. And next step is to field check, confirm the city maintenance plan selection. So we're just going through, we have money, we have, you know, we have money satisfied to buy just four black topic, you know, our, our roads going in some, doing some maintenance. So just letting you know that fascinating, you know, July 1st is the new fiscal year, so once July 1st, good. Yes, we'll try to be ready to, you know, meet the, get the window opportunity, you know, for getting equipment out there. Uh, some more, we talked to you a little bit about this. We're continuing to work on the survey and report for the fire here. TMDL, total magnitude, total mass, daily loading limits into the river. That's, that's what that is. And so we have to find places to meet those discharges into the river, how to manage that. Uh, and we have been dealing with DEQ consultants, the London Watership Council on a regular basis. Finally, in construction, uh, as you can see, there's a punch of it, I mentioned the hotel. The Indiana, Indiana, the Riverfront, the Riverfront project is making great progress. They will, we understand that they should be having all wrapped up by October. Um, so if that's the good news, bad news is they'll have it all wrapped up by October. The lawyers have to figure out if it goes that fast. They're not gonna hold on to their day hearing voices and so. That's, that's the project that we're gonna have to look, we have, we do have to actually do a little bit of active catch manager on that one because the money for that project actually has to come to us until spring. The work will be done in 18. So there's a little bit of, uh, you know, a little balance. Right, you'll see some of that, but budget documents are gonna be before you. They'll help you have a little bit. Uh, so Liberty subdivision is, is nearing its final reviews and they're shooting at another 30 or 32, 33 lots in addition to Quail Ridge, Quail Run, some division. So that is about another 60, so a lot of lots that are available for, you know, starting starts. We've, we have one builder has already bought all of that, that project and then the remaining two phases that have to be developed and approved. So they're anxious to get going and we're working with them. And, you know, we're looking at plenty of plans on Quail Run already as well. Somehow, as soon as, you know, they're not, they're waiting for those subdivisions to get finalized, bladed and maybe then made available for sale. And that's what, that's the process. Somehow those properties are available for sale and they're getting snatched up by builders and so they will see housing sprout pretty quickly here. Um, we estimate about 40 housing starts for next year, frankly, that's extremely conservative. That's the number we're using, that's the number we use for budget purposes. Uh, we're completing the landing work. You can see the parking lot is virtually done. Uh, needs to be striped. Uh, I think we have, uh, we have some E D charging station going in over there. Uh, we have some lighting that will be going in over there. The, you can see where the sidewalk ends halfway up the hill. That piece, that gap between city and the end of the wall that we haven't placed now, I mentioned this last time, will be done when Lot 8 is, when that work is done, so we doesn't have to, we don't put it in, tear it out, out of line. A little bit embarrassing. Um, but otherwise that, that, that's about, you know, the whole landscape, what's gonna happen over here on our, on our parking lot adjacent to this property. Otherwise that's, you know, that, that we were about to wrap up, they were, they did, they did great. They did good, very good work. They came in, did the second phase of the Indiana, the second project. Really nice work. I love the place. They were very fast and very responsive. Um, you can see that if you're looking back on Independence Landing, Riverfront project, I just walked in on my way and back to the office today. And they almost have the bore vault completed to, to, the upper bore vault completed to us here. So they're just moving great guns as well and then you can see where the trails are starting to get carved in on the lower terrace as well. So it's, 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 it's moving along. It's a great project. Uh, a little icon development activity. We have a rural opportunity initiative, Lunt Garden on Thursday. Uh, Sean kind of put that together and I believe the mayor would be there for that opening. Uh, we had 60 plus of 10 lots, new faces, new entrepreneurs. This is a program that will help build local entrepreneurial ecosystem. I'll let you figure out what that means. Um, also that, also had a great turnout for HBC's intensive little survey workshop on Saturday. This is, we received a grant to have to consult, look at, free historic properties outside of the district, collect historical information and decision the homes for inclusion in the district if the owners are interested. So that, that will go on and get a good turnout. And then finally, you saw the presentation on the first situation book and training. So that training practice is underway as well. That's what I have for the evening. If you have questions.
Okay.
And you, um, I think we have some reports. The chairman, are you making your presentation here?
Senator Mayr, glad to be here to introduce the person who's been serving for the city. Um, Stephanie Craig is an intern who's been with us for the last four months from the Confederate 23rd one.
Good evening and welcome to City Council.
Flahiam. Um, it's weird being out in front of City Council. Usually I'm in front of tribal council. That's what's a little different. Um, Flahiam, Flahiam, how do I make the name Stephanie Craig? Thank you for having me here today. Um, my name is Stephanie Craig and I'm a grand aunt of a Lumber. I'm Yonkola in San Antonio, Calaquilla, Topeka River, Quagmire Chinook and Calfree Don Quo. Um, my background is museum studies and anthropology. My bachelor's degree is on Oregon Western tribes. My master's degree is in, um, Western Lamont Valley tribes of Oregon, cultural anthropology and archaeology. Um, I came in last year to visit the crazy museum because I've never studied or worked at a museum that ran off of the city budget. Um, I had a college, as an undergrad, I had an internship at the Smithsonian Institute in Washington DC. And I also had an internship, um, with the Umatilla tribe in Pendleton at their museum. So I haven't had any experience on a small scale. Um, I came in, I met Shannon and it was a very, um, busy museum with a lot of stuff in it. And I knew that I could probably give a little bit of help. But also you guys as a city can help me and I can wear management practices on a city budget and city work. So we did a exhibit. It's called Inseca Ilie, which in our language in Chinook means our land. And we set, we, as you can see, we talked a little bit about the timeline, the pre-contact settlement, stolen lands and then tribal, tribal resilience facing down the relentless attacks of federal Indian policy. Our, um, just a couple of little teasers from each of those sections. Uh, pre-contact, if anyone goes around, um, the city in May, you'll see purple flowers everywhere. And that is camis. That was a staple food, um, of our people and we still eat it today. For settlement, one in 10 Native Americans died in this area. And, um, the government paid off missionaries to run, um, religious sex schools to assimilate the Native Americans. Richard Pratt, who was the founder of Carlisle School in, um, the Carlisle Indian School, um, is noted for saying, "Kill the Indian and save the man." Uh, the city of Sheridan is named after Phil Sheridan, who later became a general after he was here in Oregon for three years. And he is famously quoted and noted for, "A good Indian is a dead Indian." Um, the other panel is stolen lands. In 1850, the Congress passed the Oregon Indian Act, which allowed, um, which allowed settlers to take land that was already owned and, uh, open it up for white people to come in and settle the land. From 1850 to 1855, 25,000 to 30,000 people entered Oregon territory and pushed the Native Americans on reservations. Um, back in the day, there was hundreds and thousands of reservations. Um, just here, I think I counted seven villages that were distinctively distinct, distinctive from each other. Um, so can you, you can see how important this exhibit is. Um, just not for the community, but, um, for visitors that aren't from here. We've already had a couple of visitors as we were installing the exhibit that weren't from here and we have good feedback. So, um, I hope that I hear feedback that every one of you guys have gone in and seen the exhibit because this is your business history. This is the culture of your town. Um, and earlier you guys spoke of being, you know, inclusive and no bigotry. And in order to understand that and not be able to, um, allow that to keep happening, you need to understand your background and where you come from. And Independence has rich history, so, um, I'm hoping you guys to see it and hopefully.
Thank you for taking the time to come and present. Listen, thank, uh, thank you for helping to strengthen the, the bond between our community and the Grand Ole Giants and, uh, we really appreciate adding to the richness of our community. Thank you for helping.
Is there any questions or comments?
You have a date on the opening of the exhibit.
It's open now.
Well, we'll have a call locally in November for Native American two month.
And do you have any, anything that we can post on Facebook and website?
Well, as speakers coming in and kind of a big kind of culturally themed opening.
Anything we can do to help you promote that?
That would be amazing.
Let us know.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, moving forward, uh, Mr. Klein already gave the, uh, Public Works bid report, so I'm gonna keep us moving forward with that. Um, Mr. Johnson, I think you have, you wanted to sit, you were looking for volunteers?
Yes, and I will just leave it at that and you can contact me after the meeting.
Okay. Um, Ms. Bush provided a MIAE finance debt report, uh, in here and so it was an information piece. Uh, I'm gonna keep us moving and let's go to, uh, we have, Ms. Bush, I think it's your turn for supplemental budget.
Good evening. Now we have, uh, our supplemental budget and budget amendments. Uh, the supplemental budget was properly advertised, uh, for hearing. So, uh, other than, uh, the, the, uh, stat memo, uh, we do need to have this, uh, opened up for hearing.
Do we have?
For the supplemental budget, yes.
Does anybody have anything to say? I'm now over the drain for the supplemental budget. Does anybody have anything that want to say about the supplemental budgets?
I just have one question. I noticed on the resolution, it talks about the $3,000,000 loan transfers that are going to be happening. Will we be seeing income out of the, um, urban renewal district this year in order to pay some of that back?
The urban renewal has been paying, uh, down those inter, uh, inter-fund loans. Uh, the urban renewal, uh, projects fund is in a deficit balance. It, uh, according to our projections, it's going to improve by the end of our next fiscal year. Uh, so short answer is yes. Uh, it won't repay, start repaying this loan this, this time, but it is, it is, it is already in the process of repaying those back loans.
So, is there anybody else that has, without objection, then close that public hearing on the supplemental budget? So effectively what we're doing here is we're putting everything in the right places?
Yes.
Okay. And, and we've, we've looked at this over time. Are there additional questions for staff before we take action? If someone would suggest, uh, action, I would appreciate that, please. Make this just a resolution.
Uh, I'm looking to approve resolution number 18 dash 1476.
I have a motion.
That's the inter-fund, right? Is that first?
Yeah, we have to do is a resolution, so it's just a, I mean, it's.
I thought they might have supposed, you know.
I thought we had to be separate. No, not in a resolution.
You didn't, but he did the first one.
He did the first one. I'll cycle that. Okay, I've got a, a motion, a second. Uh, let me get a clarification. We're, we're just in a resolution, we're not in organs, right? Okay, so, okay, we motioned second, is there discussions? We're all okay with this? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, motion carries?
Is there any reason we can't pass the other two resolutions together?
I think, okay, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I think, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, excuse me.
You should be able to.
Yes, excuse me, I, yes, thank you. I was, I was, go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve resolutions 18-1477 and 18-1478 regarding budget amendments for 2017-18 budget.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Thank you very much for helping, helping you there. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, let's talk about the 18-19 budget.
Okay, so, once again, this is, I really don't have anything to add in addition to the staff report. This meeting was properly noticed for budget hearing. The, I included the detailed sheets with the budget for your information that shows the changes that the budget committee can make and approve.
Great. So what we have.
We do need to open for public.
Yeah, I was going to, I was just going to do that. Can I open both public hearings at the same time?
For the state revenue sharing and for the budget, yes.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is open a public hearing regarding state revenue sharing and also a public hearing regarding the 18-19 budget. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say regarding those matters? Seeing no one jumping to the microphone, I'm going to close that public hearing. And let, let's do the, we now have actual.
We can do all four at one time.
Do all four.
Is it one in urban?
No, we have to, we do urban renewal later. If I'm, I want to just make sure I get this in the right place if I might. Yeah, we're on page 30, so I think we have to do, can't do the urban renewal. Do we do the urban renewal?
Yeah, we'll have to open a separate.
That's what I thought, thank you. And so, revenue sharing, yes, okay. So we can do the first three, all of the loan. So I always think it's funny that we have, you know, approved to say, yes, we want the state revenue sharing. Yes, why don't you send us a check? If someone would like to make, to make a motion regarding these items on page 30? Yeah, please.
I move to approve resolution number 18-142, a resolution adopting the city of Independence budget for fiscal year 2018-19 in the sum of $26,793,646 to approve appropriations in the amount of $26,667,167 to impose and add to lower on property taxes for 2018-19 at a rate of $4.5897 per thousand of assessed value for the permanent rate and in the amount of $420,469 for debt service of the general obligation bonds and to categorize the taxes. I further move to approve resolution number 18-1481, a resolution to approve interfund loans for fiscal year 2018-19. I move to approve resolution number 18-1479, a resolution to elect, to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2018-19.
Thank you for reading all those. I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second, is there discussion? And just to let the audience know that the budget committee did review all this, passed unanimously. We have previously seen this on several occasions, so it's not, we spent. Yeah. And with 132 pages of, of tonight's packet. So I have a motion, second. I hear no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, I have to put my sheet here. We have workers' compensation coverage, page 103. And, Mr. Johnson, I think you handle that one. Is that your right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with council, I'll just report from here. There's, this is virtually the same resolution as adopted in previous years. There's no change. This is workers' compensation coverage for all of our employees as listed in that memo.
Any questions related to this? You have to do this every year. Someone make a motion, I appreciate it.
I move to adopt resolution number 18-1480, extending workers' compensation coverage.
Thank you.
Volunteers.
Volunteers receive.
Oh, volunteers for the policy year of 2018-19.
Second.
I have a motion, second discussion, it's pretty okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Mr. Irvine, I think you have something for us.
Senator Mayor, council. You may remember this question about this time last year. Our transportation system plan is about 10-plus years old. The city has changed significantly since that time, well exceeding what the expected growth rate was in some locations that had been unanticipated. So we applied last year to Transportation and Growth Management Department to get a grant to update this plan. Did not get it last year. I'll open this at the time of the chart. So I asked me all to approve resolution supporting our application for this grant program to fund this project.
Questions for staff?
I will always support free money.
If someone would make a motion, I appreciate it.
Yes, I move to approve resolution 18-1483, authorizing city staff to apply for a grant from the State Transportation and Growth Management Program.
Second, I have a motion, second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to do council announcements, then we'll go to the urban renewal meeting. Any council announcements? Okay, I'm going to, so we're going to, somebody move to during the council meeting.
Move to here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. During, now I call the board of the urban renewal district. I'll let the record show that all the councilors are here. And to get to my pages here, sorry. One of the things. And are the minutes in front of you, do they meet with your approval? From September of 2017. I move to the, approve the minutes as presented. And I get a second, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We now have, would you like to speak about the urban renewal budget? Then we'll go open that, oh, this is the supplemental.
Yeah, we'll start with the supplemental budget.
Thank you.
So once again, this was properly advertised and, and since it's a full supplemental budget, we had to advertise and open for hearing.
Okay, anybody have any? I hereby open a public hearing related to supplemental budget for the urban renewal district. Do I hear anybody who wants to say anything? I see no one stepping to the microphone. I hereby close that. Any additional comments from staff? Again, we've seen this all, this before in budget committee. If someone would like to do the appropriate wording.
I move to approve resolution number 2018. Oh, urban renewal resolution number 2018-141, supplemental budget.
I have a motion. And a second, is there further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Now move to the fiscal year 18-19 urban renewal budget. Staff report, then we'll open it from a comment.
What's behind this budget is, was approved by the budget committee. And the hearing was properly advertised and.
Okay, now open public hearing. About anybody who'd like to have anything to say about the urban renewal budget for 2018-19. I see no one stepping to the podium, so I will close the hearing. Is there any questions for staff? If anybody would like to make a motion.
Sure. I move to approve resolution number 2018-02, a resolution adopting the Independence Urban Renewal District budget for fiscal year 2018-19 in the sum of $361,607 to approve appropriations in the amount of $2,054,608 and to declare and certify the maximum tax increment that may be raised.
I have a motion, second. I want to thank you for doing lots of reading, I appreciate that. Hearing, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Any last minute comments to make? Someone would like to make an adjournment, go and have dinner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, thank you very much. You don't want to have dinner?
I think you're off of.
All right.